My name is Amy Kemp. I'm at Third Marketing and Communications. For those of you who may not know me, it's just at 11 o'clock now. So we're going to give ourselves a few minutes to let others join. And we will start promptly at 11:05. I will use this time to just go over a couple of housekeeping items for everybody here on the town hall. I know that we booked 90 minutes for this event. President Hughes will kick us off with the welcoming remarks, followed by AVP of Administration Alix Ogden to give us an update on a campus reopening plan, followed by Vice President of Academic Affairs Rosemary Costigan for an update on academic affairs. And then finally, Vice President of Student Affairs and Chief Outcomes Officer Sarah Enright will provide an update on student affairs. After that, we will go into the facilitated Q and A. And just a note on that, so on this call today or on this town hall, we have over 350 members of our college community, which is fantastic. And we received dozens of pre-submitted questions, which thank you. So what I ask is that because we have so many people in the call, we aren't able to take live Q and A today. But if there is a particular question that you submitted that is not answered today, please know that we will get back to you with an answer directly. And if there is something you hear in today's town hall that sparks a question, please capture that and please send it to the marketing email, which is marketing@ccri.edu. And we will make sure that we provide you an answer. We will also be using the submitted questions and answers to create a FAQ page to be posted on our COVID-19 webpages for everybody in the college to share and to use. And we will be updating that as more information becomes available. Let me just make sure I have everything. Everybody is muted because of the number of people that we have on the call. So when the panelists are speaking, you will be able to hear them. And then they will move on to the next person. It is now 11:05, so we are going to get started. And it is my pleasure to welcome President Hughes.
Thank you so much, and welcome everyone. Thank you so much for coming this morning for this virtual town hall. I also want to take a moment just to thank you all for coming together so powerfully as a community this spring, when in the middle of March, in literally a day's time, the entire college pivoted to delivering our teaching and learning in a remote fashion and to serving our students in a remote fashion. I am incredibly proud of what you all accomplished and know that you and we will be spending the next several months really looking at what we've learned from the spring and working hard to apply those learnings to the fall. So thank you. As you know, today's focus is what the academic fall term will likely look like. Before moving to today's focus, I want to encourage all of you to join us this Friday at 10:00 a.m. for another virtual town hall. That town hall is entitled Community Conversation: A Discussion About Race and Inclusion at C.C.R.I. This virtual, the Friday virtual town hall is being hosted by me and our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Group. It will be facilitated by Bishop Williams, who I know many of you know, a Rhode Island community leader, equity champion, and a member of our Post-Secondary Council. So I do please ask and encourage that you join us this Friday morning. I really want to thank the bishop and the members of our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Group for meeting with me last Thursday and for designing and leading this Friday gathering. Our Student Services team, again in partnership with our D.E.I. group and me, will also be holding a virtual gathering for students. And that is this Thursday, so two days from now, at 3:30. And I want to thank our students, the D.E.I. team, and Student Services for your work to design that gallery. So now to today, I want to quickly move us into the presentations by the other three presenters. Prior to that, though, I want to just take a step back and outline what we already know about the fall. We've been sharing that plan as we are designing it, both in our weekly communications and then publicly, including, I think most recently, to Linda Bork a couple of weeks ago. Once I've given that very top-line overview, I'll turn it over to Alix Ogden, who is our AVP for Administration and who is leading the campus reopening plan. She will share with us where that plan stands today and let us know what ongoing development of that plan looks like throughout the summer. So what do we know already is true today? We know already that this fall, most classes, a strong majority, will continue to be delivered in a remote fashion. And I just want to pause and acknowledge a couple of things. So we have asked our students, and they have told us clearly that the majority of our students, for most of their classes, would prefer to be in a classroom with our teachers, with our professors, and would be prefer to be sitting side by side with our Student Services teams. It's why they chose to come to us, the most of them, in the first place. And they're eager to be back at our campuses. I think we all realize that. I've heard from so many of you, your desire to figure out how we continue to serve our students effectively throughout this pandemic and while the virus remains a presence in Rhode Island and in this country. Again, Alix will walk you through where we are with the plan. But we have made a decision to continue largely in the fashion that our students experienced this spring, after a good, hard, extended look at what is required in order to fully reopen our four campuses. And the simple fact is, at this moment in time, we simply do not have the capacity to open our doors wide and welcome back what we normally like to see in any given fall, which, you know, we certainly know is well north of 10,000 students. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Alix to describe the plan, to answer the facilities-related questions that were sent. We'll then, of course, move forward to Rosemary Costigan, our VP for Academic Affairs, to talk about the work ahead for Academic Affairs, her team and all of our faculty. And then Sarah Enright, our Vice President for Student Services, will walk us through everything she and her team are doing in support of students right now and what their go-forward plan looks like for the fall. So I'll just close by saying I wish we were in together in the Great Hall or just about anywhere. And I thank you all for your patience in working in this format and just really appreciate everybody showing up today. So thank you. And Alix, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, everyone. Good morning. It's really nice to be here. And really wonderful that so many people are choosing to participate. I think I would start by saying that, you know, we are working really hard and we're working with our partners in colleges and universities across the state to come up with an approach to returning to our campus buildings in a way that makes people feel as safe as possible and is really driven by the guidance from the Department of Health and the CDC. So that's the parameters that we're kind of planning around. I participate in weekly meetings of representatives from all the higher education institutions in the state. And we get weekly presentations and questions and answers on issues that are important to consider as we think about returning to our buildings. And so you can imagine what those things are: contact tracing, testing, social distancing. And it's been really helpful because people have shared resources and we've been learning from one another. And that is really going to inform the plan that is due to the Department of Health next Monday. So the Department of Health has, and they will return the plan back to us with their feedback on June 30th. And then we're going to really take that feedback and really think thoughtfully about how we're bringing back individual work units and individuals to the campuses. So it's going to be an iterative, thoughtful process that will result in something that looks really different from when we left in March. And I think that when I think about, you know, one of the things that I have been talking a lot about with people is that I do feel like as the community college of Rhode Island, we're different. We serve the most Rhode Islanders, you know, people who've been very impacted by what's been happening in the state. And I think that that is different from the institutions that are thinking about planning and bringing students back from all across the country. We know who our students are. We know where they come from. And that is an incredibly important part of our mission and our purpose. So Megan has already mentioned that we'll be largely teaching remotely in the fall. And what do we also know? We do know that we're looking for opportunities for students to have face-to-face and, you know, kind of to be figured out, time with their professors. So we've done a number of things. So first of all, we've been in contact with our union leadership and really thank them for their communication about what their concerns are and what they're hearing from their members. I've also gotten great feedback from the Health and Safety Committee, so I really want to thank them. I've met with members of student government to get a perspective on kind of however our students are thinking about the fall. And I think that that's important. We've also done some research and analysis that I want to share with you. Many of you will remember, we worked with a firm called Goody Clancy as we developed our Facilities Master Plan. And the great news about that partnership with them is they actually have a lot of information about our spaces. And so we've gone back to them to ask for their help and their expertise in how we think about our classrooms and our common areas. And they have been really helpful in looking at how we might use our spaces and still maintain some, you know, the six-feet social distancing that is required. And so we did find out a lot about our classroom spaces, which is that we actually, it's keeping, maintaining a social distance and some circulation in the classroom does really limit how many people can be in each classroom. So we're super aware of that and just thinking about just innovative ways that maybe we can use those spaces in the fall. And so there'll definitely be more on that later after we get feedback from the Department of Health. And as I said, in July, that's when we're really going to be doing that work and communicating with you about what that looks like for the fall. We also have done things, you know, we've identified the supplies that we need per the CDC guidelines that we need for cleaning our spaces through the fall and are in the process of doing all that ordering and potentially partnering with other institutions to create greater buying power for all of our institutions, actually. So I think there's a couple, there's like five things to really think about as we're, that's kind of front of mind for us. So the first is, it's a design question, right? How do we design our classrooms? That part of Goody Clancy's work is certainly part of that. Our meeting spaces are common areas in a way that it's safe and we can continue to maintain the social distance that's required. We're also, we're, the availability of hand sanitizers. We're, facilities is getting plexiglass barriers for places where we believe we'll continue to need to have some kind of face-to-face interaction. And then there's, you know, so let me stop there. I just want to identify, I know that people have expressed concern about hot water, particularly in Warwick. So when that became an issue over the, in the spring, we began a project immediately to address that. I don't know that that problem will be solved come the fall. So we would, of course, continue to encourage people to wash their hands. But we'll also have hand sanitizer available, so it can kind of be a double duty cleaning after using the restroom. The other thing that we are going to ask people to do, which we've all been doing all along, is to modify and manage our behaviors. So right now, it is required, if you went to any of our campuses, that in the common areas, or if you don't have an office that you sit in on your own, that you wear a mask. We will be following the guidelines from the CDC and from the Department of Health regarding mask wearing. But right now, our planning with the assumption that people will be required to wear masks when they're on campus in the, in common areas. We will also have directional signs in our buildings so that there'll be areas about flow and one-way traffic and use of stairwells. And we'll have very, very visible signs about how to use that. We also are going to have screening. There is a series of questions that the Department of Health is recommending be asked upon entrance into a building. And that will be part of the protocol of entering the building. And you will be required to show your C.C.R.I. ID. And then, so we'll have this piece around screening. We will be doing what's called a some Sentinel testing. And we're waiting to learn more about that. It won't be a significant number of people every day, but it looks like right now it'll be in partnership with RIC. They would like us to get to a certain number of tests each day. And, you know, the piece about testing is really about tracking patterns. We've been learning a lot from the Department of Health about this. And so it's not, it's certainly not a preventative measure because it just shows one moment in time. But we want, we do want to be part of, for the state of looking, of participating in that, in looking at those patterns and being a part of that work. And I guess I offer that up, knowing that K through 12 and large businesses are not doing widespread testing, and they're not being required to do widespread testing either. They have been asked to take part in the Sentinel testing program. And finally, contact tracing. So I know, I'm sure some of us on the call have downloaded the Crush COVID app. But even if you haven't, being in a position where if you, that you are able to share where you've been and who you've been in contact with will be important and part of this work. And I just, now I'm going to turn to the questions, some of the questions that have been asked. And I know that there are concerns for people who have underlying health conditions and not knowing how the college is going to manage that. We have a new, very experienced person coming on in HR, whose name is Sheila Wahl. It's W.A.H.L. And she will be the point person on issues related to underlying conditions and concerns, both about being at the college and wearing a mask. So please look for more from HR about that as we get feedback from the Department of Health. There, I know that people have asked questions about the ventilation system at the college. Facilities is looking at the ventilation system on all of the buildings right now. I think most of you know, we don't have the ability to open up windows, which is true of many large buildings. But we're looking at the ventilation system to make sure it's consistent with best practices from the CDC. In terms of the elevators, I know people have had questions about that. We will be limiting the elevators to one person at a time. And we're going to ask that people prioritize those with mobility issues. And in terms of faculty wearing masks in the classroom, and, you know, we're going to be talking about that. We're looking to see if there are other measures that we can put in place, like plexiglass measures, that would take care of that. But we will be coming back to you with more detailed information about what it looks like in our classrooms. And finally, in terms of coming to the college if you're not wearing a mask. So I guess a couple of things. One is, we've ordered many, many masks. So we will have some for people, if you, if someone forgets someone or they're not able to access one, whatever that is, we will have that available to people when they come on campus. If it is the direction from the Department of Health that people should be wearing masks in common areas, we are going to require that and ask someone to not come into campus if they refuse to wear a mask and they don't have an underlying health condition that would prevent them from wearing one. And we're really just doing that for the safety of the whole community and are really going to ask, you know, again, we're talking about a change in behavior. We're just going to ask people to be compliant and recognize that we're doing that for the safety of our community. And I guess the last thing that I will say is that, you know, we're going to be gradual and thoughtful about this. And I really, your managers are going to be talking to you as they look at work areas and space issues and work schedules in terms of who's on campus at what time. And I just, I really would appreciate everyone's cooperation. I know that there are concerns and we're really, we're committed to working through them. So I really thank you. And if you have any questions, they should come to me. If you have any questions that are HR questions, they should go to Sybil Bailey, who's our Director of HR. And she's going to be working with her team to answer those questions. And so thank you. I guess, can I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add, I do have a commitment that I couldn't change, so I will have to get off the call in a little bit of time. But I'm going to be, I will watch the video and the taping of it so I can be sure to understand any other issues that come up. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. This is Rosemary Costigan, Vice President for Academic Affairs. It's a pleasure and an honor to address you today. I particularly want to acknowledge our faculty, who I equate with our frontline caregivers. I am in the process right now of going through some student survey results and just the comments, and I will reach out to every single person that was named in those shout-outs by students. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I would also like to just give you a little rundown on what has happened since March 6th, when we all left the college. Little did we know that day that our lives would change really forever. Out of this pandemic, we will certainly change the way we do, we do business, even in the academic sphere. Since that time, as early as the week of March 9th, we recognized through state and federal health officials and government officials that this was serious. This was not, this was not a flu and that we were going to have to take drastic measures. During that week, I was in contact with union leadership, our leadership within the college. And a decision was made to extend the spring break an additional week. I brought together the Instructional Design Team, Karen Belnier and Meech McIntyre. And we also brought together the Center for Information Technology, which is led by Maria Del Combi, Jean Grande, and Kyle Jackson, and brought these five people together and said, "You've got about two days to come up with a curriculum that will assist our faculty and our students in transitioning as much as possible to a satisfactory conclusion to the semester." They did a phenomenal job. We transitioned 442 courses. There were approximately 160 courses that were already online, 130, 160. But the majority were face-to-face. That was over 2,100 sections. And they did a great job of coming up with modules, extending help desk time. We've had so far 14,000 visits to the remote teaching platform. We've reached over 500 faculty who have participated in one or more of the trainings. Karen and Meech also visited 12 departments before the end of the school year to offer additional support. As far as engagement, it has been very important that we get your feedback. And we are a large faculty. There were over 800 faculty teaching in the spring semester. So we did a survey immediately upon the transition to virtual teaching. And that was really looking at what were the tools you were using? What were your biggest challenges? And we were able to identify that the Blackboard was by far the most adopted tool and that the technology and testing were challenges. Karen and her team, you know, have provided different modules to support that. We also, during the spring semester, we worked with our faculty. I met with chairs weekly. I meet with our deans twice a week. And I know our deans during the academic year were meeting weekly with their departments to get that feedback and to provide information. We did, we have subsequently done two more surveys for faculty. The second one was really a debriefing on the spring semester, what worked, what didn't work. And, you know, what didn't work for many were the labs. Academic integrity was a concern and technology. And the positive takeaways were technology, collegiality, and actually feeling a closeness with students that they didn't have always in the classroom in terms of engagement. Now, these showed up in both the negative and the positive. And just recently, a third survey has gone out. That is a self-assessment for readiness to teach online. And that is a very detailed survey that will provide information on how we can help further support faculty in this transition. As we concluded the spring semester, the team and I looked at who had been through online training, who needed to go through it. The numbers are large. Our internal team are still having a heavy workload. And a decision was made to work with Blackboard Academy. And they are offering a five webinar, two hours each, 10 hours of training that will focus on the essential elements of utilizing Blackboard and student engagement. And student engagement is an area that in all surveys is prominent where faculty are having some challenges and concerns. And vice versa, the initial feedback from students, and I'm sure Vice President Enright will address this as well. But there is one quote that is, I think, very profound, where a student has said, "I had, my faculty had to learn one way to teach, and I had to learn five ways to learn." So given all of that, this is an excellent program. We're going to be able to accommodate up to 500 faculty. And it is a production model, which means that at the end of the five webinars, the faculty member will have been building their course alongside of an instructional designer from Blackboard. That team from Blackboard will be working with our internal team to ensure that there's consistency amongst how we use Blackboard in the college and what they are, what they are teaching the faculty. In addition to this, the Instructional Design Team is offering currently, I believe there are 45 faculty, both adjunct and full-time, enrolled in the full online training course. We are looking to possibly have a July course. I've asked our Instructional Design Team to please work with faculty who have volunteered to help out in any way possible to see if we can offer that four or five-week training course once again. Just externally, we have worked very closely with the University of Rhode Island and Rhode Island College, particularly with the adoption of the pass/fail. And I thank the union leadership, both part-time and full-time, who have always taken my call and were very, very helpful and supportive when we were having to make decisions very quickly. The planning for the fall, in addition to training, and our goal for our online delivery in the fall is to enhance the quality from the spring, is to improve student engagement and helping faculty with tools to do that. And thirdly, to have consistency across, across the curriculum in terms of especially those courses that have in terms of, uh, especially those courses that have multiple sections, that we're ensuring that all outcomes are, uh, being addressed and that, uh, the student is, uh, getting a similar, um, uh, experience regardless of what section they are in. So those are our three top goals. In addition to that, um, uh, I have reached out to members of the, um, uh, Teaching Learning Collaborative and AQ graduates. Uh, we have a faculty ad, ad hoc group that is, uh, for fall planning. Um, um, union leadership is present on this. We're being, uh, facilitated, um, uh, through this process and it is a con- consultative role. We're looking at the results of the, um, the latest faculty survey. And we're also taking information that Alix has just referenced to say, if there are spaces available, how might they be used best utilized? And I know there are a lot of questions surrounding that. Um, and it has been a very, um, you know, very, very, uh, engaging group. Great questions coming forward. And, um, uh, I look forward to, um, their final recommendations that we should be finishing up in another week or so. Um, as I said, my, my goal here is to work with all of you, um, particularly the chairs and the deans, and, um, to ensure that our faculty are confident and feel comfortable, uh, returning to, um, uh, class, uh, in the fall, uh, whatever medium or modality that we are, um, providing. I know there are some questions that I think we'll take at the end. Um, but at this, uh, point, I would, uh, conclude my remarks and, uh, introduce Vice President, uh, Sarah Enright, uh, Student Affairs and Chief Outcomes Officer for the college. Sarah?
Excellent. Thank you, Rosemary. And hello, everyone. And I guess I would just start with, I miss you all. And I think we all get into this work, uh, we get into education because we care about people. This is inherently a human services and social services undertaking. And so I think for me and for every one of us, it is unusual to be here, sitting in our homes, uh, not seeing each other every day. So, thank you. I mean, I think this is just, we all have moments in our lives where things come up in such unexpected ways. And here we all, here we are all together in, in just the most unexpected moment in our country, in our, our world's history. And if I have one sentiment to our team and to all of you, it's just gratitude. I know how much we have undertaken as a community since March thirteenth. And I have seen all of you individually and collectively rise to the challenge and the challenges that are in front of us. And I'm just really struck by it. And I know that every day, always, our students are counting on, on us. They're counting on us to be their college, to, to pave the road in front of them so they can remain on a path to opportunity. And I am certain that that has been more complex than ever in the past few months and just really heartened by what I've seen in this community with, um, all of us as a community of faculty and staff supporting one another and all of us, uh, really working collaboratively and supportively with our students. I don't think I could possibly, in the time allotted, outline the number of ways in which the Student Affairs team has come together. But I will try, just in a minute, to highlight some of the things that have happened, uh, in March, just to get a sense of, of what the undertaking has looked like. Uh, we have been in contact with more than ten thousand students via text messaging. So to everyone who's been responding to those questions, morning, noon and night, uh, thoughtfully and quickly, thank you. Uh, we have supported more than nine hundred students with technology grants and, uh, hardware and Wi-Fi support to get them up and running in this remote universe. So to all of the different people across the college, from the bookstore and IT and the Foundation and Financial Aid who made that happen quickly, uh, thank you. We have done online advising appointments for hundreds of students. And that was not an insignificant technological lift and not easy for all of us to figure out. And I just feel great about the way that everyone has embraced it and made that happen. Uh, we're now doing online FAFSA workshops three times a day because, uh, we want students to be able to come to college this fall. And the FAFSA is a requisite part of that. So figuring out how we do what is traditionally a very hands-on, paper-intensive process in an online world has been, um, just really important. We, I, I have seen our DSS team work in collaboration with Academic Affairs to support all of our students with disabilities, eh, uh, on a moment's notice. You know, it's not easy to take someone who has one accommodation and figure out what that accommodation then looks like in a remote universe. So, thank you. Um, we've, we've had celebrations and as much community and student life as you can inject in a few months. I thank you to the access team. I had the pleasure of joining that celebration, uh, just maybe a few days ago. And seeing the way that, that that team put up banners and lights and, and just brought every bit of heart and soul that you can convey over the internet to students and their families, uh, it, it really matters. And, and I know that's not easy. Uh, we've had our records team working like crazy to implement pass fail grading, which is one of those, like, sounds really easy until you get to the back end of it and you actually have to implement that across thirteen thousand students. Uh, we've gone to e-transcripts to facilitate transfer of our students and enable them to do that without having to come to the counter. Uh, in partnership with marketing, we had our first virtual commencement. Again, something that typically you would anticipate, a whole lot of planning would go into that. And we made it happen. So, that's a short, non-exhaustive list and, uh, just thank you to everyone. I think, before I get into thinking at all about the fall, I'd also just like to thank all of the folks in Student Affairs and across the college who've been actively engaged over the past couple of weeks in addressing the reality of systemic racism and what that, the way in which that's hitting our country, our community and our college. Uh, it's real, it's deep, it is both longstanding, but also acute and even more painful in this very moment. And there's hope in this moment. There's immense pain and there is hope that we will heal together, reeve together, and take that pain and turn it into real change. And so to the folks who are amid that pain and amid the exhaustion of this moment and this reality, who are taking the time to engage in this work, to be part of the DEI group, to be part of the student event and planning it, I just thank you. And I recognize what that takes and what that means. So particular thanks to Nagla and Allison, who are leading the planning group for that Thursday event. I really would welcome anyone and everyone to be a part of that, three thirty to five again on Thursday. I think hearing from our students and really listening to their voices is the only way that we will truly understand how we are going to build a more inclusive, anti-racist, truly equitable college. So I would encourage everyone to bring your listening ears to that Thursday moment. So, the fall. When I think about our role in Student Affairs with the fall, it's multifaceted. But I think two themes emerge most clearly to me. One is supporting students and the second is keeping students on a path. But I'll talk more to supporting students. And I think keeping students on a path, you know, we're always talking about enrollment, uh, 'cause that's what we do. The mission of our college is to, uh, provide education. I think that enrollment, in my mind, takes on a different twist and meaning right now in that, uh, this pandemic is slowing all of us down and slowing our lives down and, and in so many ways, kind of stopping us in our tracks. I do not want it to stop our students on a path to education in, in their tracks. So I'll talk about enrollment more after. But I just think having a deep understanding of how much what we do matters and how important it is to try to support students and sticking with it, uh, is, is very much front of mind for me. In terms of what it looks like to support students, I think that there are two parallel tracks to that for, particularly for our, um, folks serving students outside of the classroom. One is, where do we find opportunities to get students on campus and support them in person? And those are varied. I've heard from across, uh, our students, I've heard from our staff, uh, a lot of different needs. So students with disabilities, new students, students who are still in developmental education, students who are in labs or very hands-on programs, um, students who are, uh, really don't have home environments that are conducive to online learning. So there are a whole lot of students who we're going to figure out and we're going to come together to figure that out, how we provide them with opportunities to be on campus, to engage, to connect, to get the resources they need. So that is one track. How do we get students on campus in a supportive fashion? A parallel track to that, given what, uh, that everyone who spoke before me just outlined, is that we know the vast majority of our students are going to be predominantly learning in a remote fashion. What does it look like to get even better at supporting students in remote learning? So that might be, how do we get even better at tutoring? There's been, uh, you know, tutoring online, which we're working with. How do we continue to refine, uh, online advising tools? How do we, you know, what does it look like, uh, to get away from some of the paper-based processes that we still have so we can facilitate things like, uh, FAFSA's even more readily? So, first piece is going to be figuring out who needs to come on campus to get the support they require and how do we make that happen? And the second piece is recognizing the reality of remote learning. How do we get, um, better every day at supporting that piece? I think the other piece that's front of mind for me, and I know for, uh, so many of us, is right now and always, but right now I think it feels more acute, is this concept that we must both support students in their education and in meeting their most basic needs. And so the education, I think, is what I was just speaking to. We need to support students in figuring out how are they, uh, in, in an environment where they can take their class online? How are they getting the tutoring they need in trigonometry? How are they, uh, you know, getting whatever assisted technologies they might need for their disability to engage in their class? So, supporting the education. We're also, in, in a moment where there are more challenges to one's basic needs and basic ability to navigate life than there have been in a long time in our country and in our state and our community. So we know that unemployment is massive. We know that, uh, people are nervous about their health and, and basic safety. We know that students are grappling with the ongoing assault and, and mental health trauma of racism in our nation right now. We know that people are struggling with food insecurity and housing insecurity. So we will, as a division, continue to bring that to the fore and focus. So I'm grateful to the team that has turned our food pantry into curbside pickup. I'm grateful to our Office of Community and, uh, Social Resources for organizing group sessions for students who need to talk and need to process all that's going on right now. I'm grateful to Financial Aid for really leading with emergency grants. I'm grateful to the Foundation for continuing to work with Financially to figure out how we do as many emergency grants as possible, as many technology grants. So I think that that's a space, education and basic needs. We're going to continue to need to, um, be focused on both right now. If we're going to, if our students are going to be able to prioritize their education, we must recognize that we've gotta meet as many of those needs and partner to meet those needs, um, on an ongoing basis. In terms of how we get that right, it's going to take all of us. So we have a student survey where we heard from more than a thousand students about what their experience has looked like learning online. We're going to bring that back, um, and, and assemble a team of people who say, given this and given what we're hearing from students, what does it look like to put together the most supportive fall that we possibly can? I think having reviewed that student survey, if there is one theme I would emphasize and just ask each and every one of you to, to take with you and to wake up each day thinking about, it's perhaps where I started. I miss all of you. And our students miss all of us. The, the number one theme that came forward in that survey is that the students who are thriving online are the ones who feel a sense of connectedness and relationship and have communication. Uh, so the students who said this is going well were then very quick to talk about a faculty member or an advisor or an access counselor or someone who had been in close touch with them, understanding their needs, engaging with them, responding to their emails, responding to their texts, calling just to check in. And the students who were struggling were the ones who felt like, I'm just not sure how to connect, how to get the information I need, how to get the sort of support I need. So my one takeaway before we work collaboratively to, to really plan the fall is just make as much time as you can in your wildly busy days to reach out, to prioritize relationships, to communicate, to be as responsive as we can all possibly be, because this isn't easy for anyone. And for that student who's trying to figure out five different ways to learn online, or that student who's trying very hard to prioritize their education with five members of their family behind them in a tiny apartment and four members of their family who just lost their jobs, that one text, that one email can be the difference between keeping them moving forward, keeping them connected to our community and not. So just that, I don't think that's radically different from what we know to be true in our in-person environment. I just think that sometimes we have to work harder in this remote environment to sort of remember that everyone's still out there and that the more we can reach out, the better. So, I think that's a lead into what might enrollment look like this fall? I've gotten this question so many different ways from so many different people. And I think I read an article last week, you know, I've read a hundred articles on fall enrollment, but the one that I think captured it best was someone essentially saying, no, I don't have a crystal ball. So I will start there, which is, no, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball or a magic way to tell you all what our college's fall enrollment is likely to look like. Here's what I know to be true. Right now, we are quite far behind where we were same day last year. We're thirty-three percent behind. That's never happened before. I think there are two drivers to that current state. The first driver is, we're still figuring out how to enroll students online. We're still working the sand out of those gears of how do you make sure that everyone has everything they need to register, pick out their fall classes, finish their FAFSA, remove any holds, et cetera. And I think we're getting much better at that every minute of every day. The second piece, which I think is the most important and the biggest driver of that gap, is there's more uncertainty in our lives and in our students' lives than ever before. So, uh, I have two nieces who are college students, one in Massachusetts and one in Florida. And they haven't made up their minds. And it's because everyone is trying to understand what our fall is likely to look like, figure out what their life is likely to look like, and then figure out what to do. So my expectation is that we are going to close a lot of that gap. I don't think we're gonna have a fall that's thirty-three percent off of last fall. I think we're gonna close a lot of that gap. I think we're gonna have a very busy summer in Student Affairs as students realize, ah, yeah, I do, no matter what, I wanna continue and get a college education. That's gonna mean we're gonna process more FAFSA's, enroll more students, uh, and provide more support in July and August than probably any summer in, in years past. So, I welcome more questions. I will provide as much information as I have. I think the best thing we can do is continue to reach out, continue to communicate the importance of staying on a path to education, even when it's hard, even amid all the challenges that are going on right now. Because we know that the data on students who stop out is, for every, for every ten students who say, I'm coming back next semester, we certainly don't see ten. You know, we might see four. So, I think it's on us to communicate the importance of sticking with it and, and then to get better at all those things that I spoke to. And, and now I feel like I've been talking for far too long, but, uh, I just feel like I'm hearing so much. I just feel like I'm hearing so much from all of you and hearing so much from our students that I appreciate the opportunity to kind of share where I think we are, to share my gratitude for all that we've done to date and to try to outline what I think the next few months and the fall look like. So with that, I believe the next step is for me to turn it back to Amy Kemp, who's going to facilitate some questions.
Thank you, Sarah. So yes, um, so we are going to get started on the Q and A. I would like to just remind everybody that if your question was not answered as part of the presentations that you heard or through this Q and A, please know that we will get back to you with an answer directly. And again, if you have follow-up questions from today, you can send them to marketing@ccri.edu. But as Alix mentioned, if they are an HR-related question, please send them to Sybil Bailey in HR. So Sarah, we're gonna start with you, if that's okay?
Sure.
So you referenced disability services and finding ways to support disabilities, students with disabilities. Has the college given any thought to prioritizing students with disabilities returning to campus in the fall?
Yeah, I absolutely, thank you, Amy. Think that students with disabilities are a high priority population in terms of making sure that their needs are met this fall. And I think meeting those needs will come in different ways. I was speaking with Trace Karasinski just this morning, who was saying it's a small number, but for students who rely upon the assistive technologies that they don't have in their homes that only exist on campus, we must find a way to get those students back. There are also some students with other disabilities who rely on a certain degree of sort of hands-on support. So I think figuring out what it looks like to provide something like hands-on support in person in a manner that still meets all of the public health and safety requirements will for sure be a high priority for the fall.
Great, thank you. And another question for you. Does the college anticipate holding on-campus student activities this fall and winter, including athletics, theater performances, student life activities, student life groups? Things of that nature.
Yeah, great question. I'm, I'm thinking through that list because I think the answer is to some degree, yes. To, to the fullest extent possible, we will want to provide opportunities for students to engage in life outside of the classroom. In terms of what that looks like and what that means for some of the pieces that you outlined, I don't think we know yet, right? So athletics, here's what we do know. We're absolutely not going to be convening large groups. There's going to be no athletic contest with 100 people in our fieldhouse. What it means for our teams, we don't know yet. I was just reading this morning, my husband was talking about what the NBA is doing with sequestering 22 teams at Disney World so they can have a quarantine and be able to play. So I think even when you look at colleges and professional organizations that are trying to figure out these questions, there's so much to figure out. So we will be working on that. I would say the same for things like theater performances. We can be certain that we're not going to be convening very large groups. And, and so we don't know what the answers look like right now for fall. I also know that we have many, many student clubs and activities. And in the same way that I talked about students who want to come on campus to get support with reading or writing or math or to, to access assisted technology, we will look for opportunities to enable small groups of students to come together in, in whatever club and student life fashions we can reasonably do within the bounds of the public health constraints and requirements. So that's something that I'm certainly going to be looking to our student life team and our students to, to figure out. But it's not something that we have firm answers to right now.
Great, thank you. So Rosemary, if we can switch over to some questions for you right now. So, given that we are going to be teaching a large percentage of classes remotely in the fall, will there be any virtual sessions for faculty to discuss student engagement? One person wrote that, or she, or well, they were able to successfully transfer what they did in the classroom to collaborate. They found that student engagement was difficult remotely.
Yes, there'll be several opportunities that faculty can take part in. The first one will be the, the Blackboard Academy that we we are planning on offering that will be starting up in late June. There will be sessions on engagement and it's actually a thread that goes throughout that, that program. Internally, our instructional design team will continue to offer one-to-one opportunities for best practices. We also have archived webinars that, that do focus on the topic. And I'm really happy that the question was asked. It is one that has come through in our surveys and one that I believe we can incorporate into our faculty ad hoc group on Thursday, as many of those members are part of the TLC group and perhaps have a virtual group that gets together to talk about that in a more informal way. But please look forward and, and you know, utilize that remote learning platform that has many, many resources to support improved engagement.
Thank you. Thank you. Similarly, on that note, and I'm, with Alix having to go to her next meeting, I'm not sure if you're able to answer this, but would love your thoughts. Is it possible or will it be possible to hold campus, hold classes on campus for the first couple of weeks to build the relationship between faculty and student that we know is so critical to student success? And secondarily, will faculty be able to hold office hours on campus to meet with students face to face?
So let me ask, let me answer the first question about whether they can come to campus during the first two weeks. What we do know based on the information we've received so far is that there are going to be limited areas that we may use as flexible spaces. How that is going to look and to what degree we'll be able to utilize it, I can't give that answer right now, but it is our goal that we do provide faculty an opportunity for those that desire it to have the ability to come on campus. And some rooms may be outfitted as high-tech, which would allow them to do some streaming, have some students in the classroom and then stream out to their students who have to remain at home due to class size capacity. Low-tech classrooms, that would be more for engagement purposes. And then looking at larger spaces that potentially could be used for bigger gatherings. But the, the, one thing we do know is the spaces will be limited and the, and the capacity will be limited. We are looking at how we can move those areas that have class components that really are very difficult to deliver remotely, such as labs. So I have just reached out today to see if the space planning group can, can meet with the chairs of those departments that have specialty requirements such as the health and sciences and performing arts and arts. So I look forward to more information as we're getting more data to tell us exactly classroom capacity and capabilities. But that, that is our goal, that there would be an opportunity for faculty to reserve spaces to, to come in. Now, the second question, the second part of that question was about office hours. We will have to address office hours as the socially distancing. We know that faculty, there are more than one faculty in a, in a space. So that's going to have to get very, very developed in terms of a plan. How faculty can come back, make an appointment with a student, make sure that an office mate has, is not double-booked and whatever the cleaning procedures are that would happen in between. So, and then there may be some additional open spaces that we can utilize. So we're, we're moving, I think, very, we're moving much faster now as we're getting more information from our health officials at the state and federal guidelines. And we're learning more about this virus day to day, which has been, it's a good thing, but it's also been very, very challenging because the lethality of it has been really unprecedented in modern times. So we want to do the right thing and make sure everybody's safe. So I, I hope that that gives a little bit more clarity.
Great, thank you. So I'm mindful that I promised everybody on this, this town hall that we would try to keep this to just about an hour. I think there were a lot of questions and there will be, continue to be a lot of questions. So again, please send them to us and we will work to get answers for you. And we will also post an FAQ to the COVID-19 webpage. So with that, I would like to do is to turn it back over to President Hughes for some final remarks.
Thanks, Amy, and thanks to everyone for being with us for a little over an hour. Appreciate the inaugural run of this virtual approach to town halls and as a related but separate issue, would just ask, share your feedback for kind of how it worked, how the technology worked. Really want to thank John Voda and the IT team for working so closely with Amy to stand this event up. So please do share your feedback, particularly if there were challenges at any point with being part of it. Again, I know that the presenters incorporated a lot of the questions that came in into the remarks they shared. It, for us to really ensure that we have the most successful fall, it's gonna be so important that we continue to share with you as we're getting feedback from the Department of Health, as we're getting feedback from the Department of Administration, and as we're hearing from our sister colleges around Rhode Island, that we share what the learnings are and what the actions are that we're taking in, in, as a result of those learnings. Equally, as you all are setting yourselves up for fall, you will think of questions and considerations that likely haven't been surfaced yet. Please keep those questions and considerations coming forward so that folks can really think about them and work to resolve them in a timely fashion. So thank you all so much for joining us from our teleworking environment and want to close again by encouraging all of you to come back in this forum altogether on Friday at 10:00 AM for our conversation about what's going on in this country and the colleges of response to what we have seen in the events going on in this country. So please join us and again, want to close by just saying, thank you all for joining us. Enjoy the rest of your day and look forward to seeing you all back here on Friday. Take care.